The kids used to run a train, had a big old train. And they said that they used to, they get done working up there with the pit, they used to take the ground out of the water. Some loved joy pit, I think they were. And they, so at the end of the day, he'd let those guys get up in the bucket, he'd swing them out and they'd jump in the water. No liability there. I didn't do it, by the way, because I can't swim. But I did see him do it.
I should say, I apologize, I meant to make a cake, but happy birthday Travis.
Well, yeah, happy birthday.
Thank you.
We won't ask how many.
Enough. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, we'll start with pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great peace and justice for all.
Roll call.
Hockler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda, and did you want to add? Oh, for the top pointing.
I did add it because it was already, I posted the agenda before nine o'clock and then remembered that that needed to be on there, so I went ahead and updated. Your packets won't have it, but the agenda that was posted has it.
But it's not on this agenda that we've got in front of us?
No, and it was just down at the bottom, so just anywhere at the bottom there would be fine. I sent out the revised agenda with the, with the email that had the proposal from Beckenhour, so.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I didn't see it on.
Yeah, sorry, it was like midnight and I was tired, so.
Okay, so approve agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes, are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Larry, you're here to, for the driveway application for Travis Johnson?
Yep, just recommending approval for it. Rod went out and expected where it was gonna be and he's okay with it.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes.
And I think for their signature, they e-signed something?
Yep, yep, he has signed, yeah, Travis does.
Do you want to talk about digging without permission in the ditch on 302? Okay, and he's not, he's obviously not coming today, correct?
Right, yeah, he had a funeral up in Brookings.
Oh, okay.
We gotta table that?
Yeah, put that on next agenda.
So you said it, which is it east of, is it, it's on 302?
On 302, which is the Wakanda Road.
Okay.
So there's digging, and I don't know, I think he wants to figure out what we, what we need to do with the letter, because there's two spots on 302.
Same person?
No, two different people.
Okay.
So, we gotta figure something out, send him a letter, let them try and come up with a, with a solution.
Well, I know the one by the Red Barn, East End over there, they dug about that far below the culvert.
Right.
So, it'll just pool up right there in front of that culvert.
And eat out underneath of it.
Wow.
Because it's a, there's gonna be a lot of water coming through there, it looks like.
Did it cross the driveway then, or they just dug at the end of the field?
Well, they dug through the field.
Okay.
And then come out and dug right to the culvert.
Just dug right straight to the culvert.
Yeah.
So.
Still dug it too deep.
Right.
So that'll cut the whole culvert out of there, sure as heck.
Yeah, it'll undermine it, Rod says we gotta put some type of a plate.
Yeah.
They're paying for it.
Right.
Yeah, there's a little plate down there now for that safety end, but it only comes down about that far.
Right.
So the holes aren't that much farther down below.
How, how big is that culvert?
Like, that's 24 inch.
Yeah.
At least. It might be a 36.
It might be a 30.
30? It looks big.
Yeah, I was thinking that was pretty big.
It could be a 30.
And then the other one where they dug, that's same type of deal?
Well, they, yeah, they dug down in the ditch for ways, you know, they, they come across, it comes across the road from the north, and they went from that culvert west to the creek that goes through the field. They're used to, and there's two culverts there that come across from the north, and there used to be two creeks. Well, they brought them together, but used the ditch to bring them together.
Oh, that's nice.
If they'd had just stayed inside their fence line, wouldn't have had a problem.
Right.
But they used the ditch to dig it deeper and bring it.
Okay, so, interesting, and that one's gonna entail Lexi helping write some type of a letter. Okay. So we're done there, the board of adjustment, do you have the sign?
We, Rod ordered it, and they're $198 each, so they're on order, and they got approved, I guess, from the sign company, Barco. So, you ordered them, they're on their way.
I forget, Carrie, did we make, did we do a promotion last week, or a formal, or is that what we need to do right now?
Um, that's what we need to do now, because last week you left it out, they needed to put their request in writing so that Rod wasn't constantly changing the signs.
So if the signs are ordered, we can approve, we can approve putting them up then.
Yeah, move to approve that.
Well, we need to go to board of adjustment.
Oh, okay, move to go to a board of adjustment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, we're the board of adjustment, Dick, did you?
Make that motion, yes, move to approve that sign.
Two signs.
Two signs, correct. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
What was the price on that, and where were we on that?
Okay, I had, what was that, Phyllis?
What was the price on that, and our decision on that?
So the price was $198 per sign, and the, the club is going to pay for that. We're just, we're just approving the placement, which is already, which is going on in existing,
Right.
You call it, existing two-post stand, I guess.
Part of me says, as a public service, why don't we pay for it, but that's, I guess, already been discussed.
Well, I, I think it's because it's kind of a gray area between, if it's a public club or if it's private, since you gotta pay to be part of it. It's open to anybody, but, I don't know.
Well, a lot of clubs have memberships anyway, which is either way it goes. I, I, I guess I would be okay with paying it, myself.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a rough precedent, I mean, I'm not sure we want to set, set a precedent, I mean, I think that if it's a private organization, you know.
But we've now combined it with a public organization, so that's where.
It's, it's still a private membership organization.
One is, the other is not.
And which is not?
Oh, because there's a, it's the sportsman's club and, and the pistol club.
Yeah.
They're both on county property.
Right.
Only.
One's more private than the other.
Well, they're both private.
Yeah, you just gotta pay to join. I mean, we can.
I, I would vote to pay for the signs.
So if the Rotary Club, which is a private organization, decided to meet on county land, would we pay for their sign?
I believe we would. But.
I don't.
Being those are usually paid by the city, so, or.
Yeah, the city, well, she wanted to make a motion to pay for it.
Well, let's, let's do the motion for the, for placement first, because that's what we have.
Yeah.
Any more discussion on the placement of the signs? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes, now we can discuss payment.
And I'll make a motion that we pay for the signs.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, now, you know, getting to the Rotary, I've seen plenty of Rotary signs out on the road, and, and I kinda doubt that the Rotary Club pays for those, I think that's a service to the public to help direct traffic to each of the entities that rise to the, rise to the level of getting permission to have a sign there. And they have to conform to what we want, as far as the sign is concerned, it's a little more expensive than I thought it would be.
Right. Lane, Lane has his.
Yeah, Lane?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've been president of several service organizations in town, and the signs on those boards, the clubs pay for.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because they, the city or whatever provides the post, but the clubs are responsible to put those signs up if they want them up.
And pay for it.
Yep.
Okay.
Fine.
I'll follow that.
Well, so we've got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Hammond.
No.
Manning.
No.
Smith.
No.
Packard.
No.
Hockler.
No, motion passes.
Clarifying what is done, and.
Yeah, on further clarification, that's what makes sense.
Yeah, I do believe that the county is going, the county shop will put them, will hang them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, right side up.
Thank you.
It'd be cool if you got those little stickers that looks like bullet holes.
Yeah, yeah.
Since it's the pistol club.
Oh, God.
All you have to do is wait a year or two, and then like.
The real thing.
You don't need to buy stickers.
I'm going to come out of board of adjustments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, we're in regular session. Getting back to those, those little spinners on top of the stop signs, do we have to replace those every time they go bad?
We ordered some more, and they haven't come in yet, but yeah.
Because I see there's quite a few.
Yeah, there's quite a few that are.
It's a flag, no, it's just one little.
Yeah, you know, they're kind of breaking, we tried to get some flashing lights, but they didn't last very long, they went dead, the batteries went dead.
Is this mic on?
Oh, is your mic on? Sorry, Phyllis.
His voice carries pretty well, but it.
Sorry about that, but.
We were, we were talking about the little spinners on top of the stop signs out in the county.
Yeah, yeah, we'll replace them when, when they're bad. Yep.
Whenever they come in?
Whenever they come in, yep.
Um, ditch board.
Move to go into ditch board.
Second.
A motion is, or, yeah, motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, we're in ditch board, riprap for the Yankton Clay Ditch.
Okay, and this was the discussion that we had last week. So I moved to approve.
And that was 25,000, wasn't it?
I'll second that.
It was in that ballpark, yeah, I don't have the number in front of me, I think last week the concern was that we would have enough money and, you know, by the time we get April's taxes in, it'll be fine, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and they're, they're done, so.
So I got a motion and a second, correct, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes, payment for Jet Li Park.
I'd move to approve that. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
That, yeah, I looked that over and that looks like a pretty good job they've done. Uh, also, slightly related, I did get ahold of Karen Caperly. Wow. And she, after an hour and plus discussion, she agreed to allow, allow us to yellow ribbon trees that we would want to take out, and she'd go down and take a look at it, and we could negotiate from there.
She doesn't understand that anything in the in slope is not negotiable.
Yeah, I, well, she probably doesn't, but. I think that, yeah, she's, she's still staying overnight in the assisted living.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so that's part of why it was hard to get ahold of her. As long as we're in ditch board?
Well, we've.
Okay, let's do this, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
So we've got the riprap, and we've got the motion and a second, we still need to vote on it.
Oh, we already, didn't we already vote on it?
Did we vote on it?
We voted on the riprap, but not the Jet Li Park.
Jet Li Park. And I interjected because Karen's thing was close.
Close to Jet Li Park. So did we get a motion and a second on the Jet Li Park then?
We did, we just need a roll call.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, I've got, I left it out in my pickup, if I can go get it, it's the Prairie Center, you know, we talked about the agreements with the different, with like Yankton Clay Creek, to see how the land and that kind of stuff. Well, I've got the one for Prairie Center back in 1952, I think, when they actually put the ditch in, and it talks in there that they gave the commissioners on that one. Let me go get it, it'll take me, it'll take me 10 minutes to wash out. In reading through the denial, too, I, I wonder it.
Weren't they rather quick with that? I know it's been a bit, but.
No, because we knew it was coming, we just didn't know when.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just gotta, we need to figure something out in a letter to write to them.
I, it didn't seem to me that there were really three bases for the denial, or three eligibility determination criteria, and it seemed to me like it could be that only two of the three would really be necessary, wouldn't necessarily have to have origination documentation if we were county commissioners acting as the board. And if we sent them a, a letter documenting that may be enough to get our money.
And we can easily do that, I mean, we have annual meetings that we're
now.
In charge of, and we've got the minutes.
Since I'm not a lawyer, I, lawyer, have Lexi think about that part, but it seemed to me like if we, if we certified or made a declaration that we were commissioners acting as the administrators of that ditch board, the members are all those landowners, but we administer the, the thing, that sounded to me like that would be enough to do the trick, and I, like I say, I'm no, I'm no lawyer, but I have been an administrator doing those sorts of things, and.
So that's exactly what we're doing.
Yes, right.
Yeah, and I, if you read Amanda's letter to us, it describes all things that are easy, I, I think for us to write in a letter, they, they, they basically want to know some history, they want to know how does it actually operate, and they want to know why we don't have an ordinance, and it seems to me that, you know, the kind of documentation that Carrie found and the fact that it's always worked this way, you know, provides for them a legal basis on which to extend funds to us, so I, I, I don't think it's a, it's a stretch. I mean, they're, they're really asking us for a common law explanation, since we don't have a statutory explanation, and I, I don't, you know, I don't see that that should be a problem, there are all things that, they're asking for all things that we can state as true, so.
They're just asking for, for a determination that, that yes, we do administer that, that ditch.
Law would be simpler, since it's federal government, right, not state law.
Well, I, I think the, the idea behind common law is that practice really matters, that we've done it this way for so many years, it was prior to when, you know, we were a very organized county, and so what we have are some minutes referring to a petition, but, but the records are so old that we don't actually have the petition, and I think that's what they need to know, however, since that time, it's operated in this particular way, you know, citizens assess themselves, the, the county administers the program, and, you know, and, and, you know, from talking to other commissioners at that training session, other counties have exactly the same problem, and they've all been able to solve it with a lawyer letter, it has to be from a lawyer, that, that states these things, and that, you know, basically provides the history, right, you know, wh, wh, which, yeah, so, and, and they want to know why we don't have an ordinance, and that seems really easy as well.
Yeah, we don't have anything as simple as a courthouse fire, like, like has happened in other.
Right, right. But we do have is that.
But we don't want to, we're not, in no way am I suggesting.
Yeah, but, but we do have.
Yeah.
You know, we, we do have the fact that there was really no statutory structure at that time.
Yeah.
That would allow this to happen, and therefore an ordinance was not contemplated at that time, you know, and, and, you know, it's probably sensible for us to work with Lexi in the future to have an ordinance, you know, that details what we're doing, so we'd never have this problem with FEMA again.
The question that I had back in 1905, was a petition provided verbally and accepted as such, and it didn't require a written petition? That's a question. Yeah, the one thing we've never found is that written petition.
Right.
And.
But Carrie, you found a reference to it, yeah?
I found a reference to it, that there was a petition that.
Right, but is that petition meaning a written one or a verbal one? You know, back then, everything was done on a handshake.
Yeah, I, I think it referenced that it was written.
Okay.
I'm having a hard time remembering exactly, because they were, you know, old, old minutes, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but either, either way, you know, there was no statutory framework at that time, and so the county created this system, and it's been there ever since, and I, I, you know, reading Amanda's letter over again yesterday, I looked at that and said, that's, that's not hard, that's not, that's not a stretch, those are all things, you know, we ought to be comfortable telling FEMA, and it seems as though they would be happy with that. And maybe a copy of the minutes and, you know, that references the petition, and, and then a clear description of how the ditch board operates, and that should do it.
Yeah, and I think the minutes, we can just, we could probably attach a few copies as examples, you know, from like 1955, 1985.
Yeah, I can make copies, you know, from the first set where it first references that things were.
And 1905, I suppose, for their first original.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were trying hard by making direct reference to our, our own minutes from the last three years, so you can tell they were trying hard to make it, make it work for us.
Yeah.
Reading those old minutes.
Yeah.
We could, we could say, here, it's, it's all in here, if you can decipher what this says, because it's hard to read.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the other possibility is, I know Lexi is uncomfortable, one possibility, if Lexi continues to be uncomfortable, would be to do what some other counties have done and hire a specialist who does exactly this, they're basically saying they want a lawyer. You know, our, our state's attorney does a lot of criminal stuff, she doesn't necessarily do a lot of this kind of thing, and she might be more comfortable, you know, hiring a expert lawyer, and I would certainly be willing to make some phone calls and, and, and find the person who's done it for some other counties, if, if needed.
I would be in support of that, because I know Lexi is caught up on the legal in wanting the exact legal structure for her to sign it, and if we have a more water rights lawyer, he'd be able, she would be able to address that.
So we have, well, not, I shouldn't say we, on the personal side, anytime we've had a problem with the Vermillion River, we've used Jim McCullough, and now I know when they set up the Pleasant Valley Association through the T, through TLC or Vermillion Water Base, I can't remember which board did it.
It should be TLC.
They're using Rinkey Noonan out of Minnesota. So, those would be two good ones to start with. And two good, what do you mean, Brad Preheim would be able to probably help someone on this.
Yes.
And point us in the right direction of authority, how to, how to describe authority to FEMA.
Yeah, and we can save a lot of money by collecting all the information in advance, and I'm less familiar with ditch board than you are, so if somebody's willing to write down exactly how the ditch board operates, you know, I, I think that would be really helpful, and if we can give that package of stuff to the attorney, we'd probably save ourselves quite a few hours of, of attorney time.
And if I, if I can say something, uh, they are not, you guys are right, they, they are looking for reasons to give us the money. You know, so all of that is great, just remember the timeline, we've only got 60 days now from the time of the letter.
Yeah.
So we're already falling behind, so we, if we want to do this, we gotta do it rather quickly, so.
I'm recommending, I don't believe we can make a motion to hire at this, because it's not on the agenda, correct?
Well, but we can do it Tuesday.
But we can do it Tuesday, and I'd say, go and get somebody, talk to Jim McCullough and this Rinkey, and maybe get a proposal of what they recommend for cost, or, and have us pass something on Tuesday to hire and get them going.
I would, I would suggest using Jim if he is, if he has time, just for the.
Right.
Just for the logistics, yeah, he's right here, and Lexi and him have worked together.
And something I think that is helpful, too, is that we, we don't act as the Clay, Clay Yankton Ditch Board, and the Clay Creek Ditch Board, and the Pleasant Valley, or the Prairie Center Ditch Board, we act as a overall ditch board for the whole county. And, uh, we ask them.
For those three entities. For those three entities.
Correct, and we, we, at our annual ditch, ditch meeting, we ask each of the folks that are showing up that are members of that, that association to vote on what we do. We administer that.
Yep.
And since we do that as one board for all three of them, that implies that we are acting as the administrative board for them too. So having them combined, I think is, helps our argument.
Okay.
So, so who's gonna contact Jim McCullough and who's gonna put together a, you know, a sort of operations outline?
Well, I think we should probably wait till Tuesday before we contact him.
Okay.
I, I want to know what Lexi, what her opinion on this is.
Yeah.
Good.
So, and that's only three working days away. Is this, Lane, is the 60 days, is that every day or is that 60, you know, business days?
That's a really good question. I will send Amanda an email now and see what, see what she says.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I have for ditch board is I did drive, I drove in that way, past Holmes's this morning. And those evergreen trees are, they're, they're on the back slope of the creek, but they're, you know, it's, it's on the in slope. So some, at some point, we're gonna have to look at those, because the roots are starting to show and I'm afraid they're gonna fall in if we don't just remove them first, but we can look into that. Does anybody have anything else for ditch board?
The only thing I had was on the Prairie Center was, it says in here, and sorry about that again. Uh, in 1952, they petitioned to have the Board of County Commissioners take on the Prairie Center Ditch Board to establish a drainage ditch. And it goes down here, further down in here, it says, be therefore resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Clay County, South Dakota, a regular meeting, adjourned meeting thereof, taking the south, they said taking. So taking means they took the piece of ground, correct? To establish that ditch. And that's what it says in here, so that made them controller of it, because they took it from the, from the landlords. Even though I still pay taxes on it, they actually had the taking of it. And then they said they, they went on further here and said they assessed what value each landlord had in, into the ditch. And that's how they came up with how much you pay, which is a screwy system here, by the way. I don't understand this one at all, I mean, but anyhow, but that's, so it's, to me, this shows that they actually did take that ditch. So I'm assuming that's how they did the other ones too, I assume it's not a good word, but.
But they had to have something they went off of.
Yeah.
And that needs to be part of our letter.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think I got it from I N E S, actually, who I got it. But you can, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
It's got a page, reference page up here, 164. So. So I thought, I was just reading through it again, I had read it, you know, I kept saying I had it in my pickup.
What was that under? You found it in the register of deeds?
I think I got it from I N E S. Gave me all the different landlords at the time and how it was assessed.
Let me, let me see that copy, let me just hold that up. Can you just hold it up? I just wanted to see if it was, okay, that's a copy of the minutes.
Yeah.
Um, the minutes book, so I, I have that in my office too, so, yeah.
So I thought, well, you know, and I got reading through it and I didn't, I missed that taking part the other two, three times I read it. This time, whoa.
But, but takings, I think, doesn't necessarily mean that you're taking the land in title. It can mean that you're taking an easement on that land without taking.
Right, or a right of way.
Right away.
The right, the right to use it, just like the 33-foot right of way around, on the township road. That's a taking of that for the common good.
You still pay that.
You still pay taxes on it right to the middle of the road.
Right, exactly.
Unless you end up with surveyors. Problem.
Anything else for ditch board? Take a motion to come out.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're in regular session, but get to see the vouchers.
I did not send those out again just because I had sent them out last week and they didn't change, sorry.
Move to accept them.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Resolution for cancellation of outstanding checks in the amount of 500 and, let's see, one year's, they said checks of warrants for $567.64 in auditors warrants and $1,973.24 in treasurer's checks.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, back in our agreement.
Where did the recommendation for this company come from?
This is our construction management at-risk firm that the committee chose with Dick Strasburg.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones that were chosen for the building project.
I'd move to accept that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I, I'm not getting it pulled up very quick.
There's.
But it's not to exceed 6100 and some dollars.
Right.
Right, and there's not a signature, it's just a, you know, it's just a, they're proposal for that, so.
Not to exceed 6160. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else?
There's a planning meeting tonight, right?
Yes.
And I'm not gonna be able to make that one, I don't think. I grabbed some plain pocket.
Are we posted for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes, we're adjourned.
I have a.
So you don't need this up there, right?
No, I, I have that in my office, I don't need a copy.
I did, pretty much you did.